Good evening, how are you all? Welcome. I was just starting the work session. This is an informal session in which we look at issues that we're dealing with. And certainly, the one that we're here to talk about tonight is important to all of us. And it's an issue that certainly raises its concerns within our community. So with that, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the microphone, and you can either do it individually or collectively, it doesn't matter. There's a button right in the center which will lead you to a green light. And so if you would press that little button, there it is. And would you go ahead and for the record, would you introduce yourself to us? And tell us what you have been doing with the type of program we're talking about tonight, the Oasis program.
Okay, good evening. My name is Pamela Krieger. I'm the Health Officer of Prince George's County. And thank you, my Associate Director Wright-Doss and I, we apologize for being late. It's nice and fun traffic today, so we appreciate it. We did not break any laws, so thank you.
Thank you.
So today, we're here to basically talk about what the program for Oasis that had been happening, occurring here in your lovely city, and how we want to support a transition plan from what historically for the Health Department had been a Youth Services Bureau. We were the only health department in the entire state that was in that business. And this started long before my term as Health Officer. But one of the things we wanted to do was to help support similar services and additional services that your city may need that might look a little differently than what had been done for many, many, many years. And primarily, coming to understand what we were actually providing is as recent as a year and a half, maybe two years ago, before anybody fully understood the details of the program. For the most part, the participants and the leaders in the Health Department thought it was just a provider program that provided services, behavioral health services for youth. In this program, it was a little bit more than that, and we won't have to relive any of that. But what we're recommending is that our Health Department should not be in the business of local Youth Services Bureau. But we absolutely wanted to support and provide assistance and transition to provide behavioral health services for youth. In addition to feedback, support, technical assistance for other things that you needed. We did provide some data. Unfortunately, it was supposed to come a couple of weeks ago. It came today with regards to the demographics and the specifics of what is going on here in Laurel City. And that information could inform you with the kinds of services and programs you might want to consider creating going forward. But we have the support of our Chief, Deputy Chief Administrator for the overall county, Betty Hager Francis, who represents the County Executive in going forward to provide technical assistance from the Health Department to provide help, support creating treatment services or getting you linked up with that. We also are interested and are willing to support financially with what we were doing from our general fund. We can't at all possibly use any grant funds. And that's partly why, not majorly, but some of why we're here is the shift in our grant dollars for the services we provide for the entire county. And but we had talked about in an earlier preliminary meeting what kind of financial support that could look like for one, possibly two years. But we were all in agreement that what we want to offer are help you create programs that were supportive for your needs today. The program from the past may meet your needs, may not. But there are a lot of great things happening in your city that you could leverage in a collaborative way, providing services to your residents that would be beneficial and a little bit more expanded. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you. And my Associate Director Wright-Doss is here. I don't know Wright, is there anything you want to add? He always does.
You sure?
Okay. All right, questions from the council. Mr. Smalls?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm curious, is this data, this sheet, is this a sheet that was provided? I'm just curious, in the header it says that, or the subheader, Behavioral Health, Maryland Hospital Visits for Laurel Residents in the ZIP Code 20707, et cetera. And just out of curiosity, I see Prince George's, I presume Holy Cross and Anarundel. But we have a hospital right in our backyard, as you both know. There's a point, I presume.
So you want to talk about, so the data is from our epidemiologist, so the population, we can, we gave it to our epidemiologist who provides great data, and it's always a lot more than we need. But you want to bring this down to what we were to offer here?
Well, if I could just narrow before you speak, my comment and question, and that is, if we're considering services, I'd like to get a sense of what the scope of the healthcare needs are directly in, within the city limits of the community of Laurel versus what appears to be sort of the greater Laurel area.
Okay, I'll let you speak to the data. What I can tell you, what we have been providing over the years unchecked, unevaluated, because nobody really understood the program, was your drama club program. There were some individual therapy that was happening. In terms of volume, they weren't great volumes compared to our other clinics.
Okay.
Technically compared to the rest of the behavioral health services we were offering in the Health Department, very small services. The drama club was very popular, and it was a great tool for schools, systems, and one who needed that kind of group, which I think is something that could continue. But in terms of the sheer volume of the services that we offered throughout the county, very small numbers.
Okay.
And I think that when you give it to an epidemiologist, you're going to get all the data. We have a magnificent one. Wright, you speak to what this report does, and then we could get back. If we haven't answered your question, we're going.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Good evening. May I introduce myself? My name is Wright-Doss. I do work for the Health Department, Associate Director for Behavioral Health Services.
Thank you, Dave.
The table that you have before you, just one point, so there were five ZIP codes we were asked to collect data on. Four of these are represented here. The fifth one was in fact a post office box ZIP code only. So there was no, there was, you know, some negligible amount of data associated with that. So we only provided the data on the four sets here. Two of these ZIP codes are within Prince George's County. 20723, I was informed is a part of Howard County. And then 20724 is a part of Anarundel-Cad.
Okay.
So we have all of this data to look at. There is data here that is collected from the, it's called HSCRC, which is the Maryland...
IRS, it's our hospital commission.
Yeah, it's the Health Services Cost Review Commission. And so there's data on for each of these ZIP codes for inpatient, mental health, and substance abuse services. And then emergency room visits, the volume of visits, not the number of residents, but the volume of visits for those services. There's then a, on the far right, there is a rate per hundred thousand of those visits. So the highest rate in those ZIP codes is in the 20707, 1,891.1 visits total per hundred thousand. And then slightly less for 20708. The second graph on the bottom half of the page takes into account all of the visits identified in the upper part, but breaks them down by gender, by age group, and by the payer type, so whether or not the visit was paid for using public funding that is medical assistance, whether there's a private payer, or the person where it says self-pay, that generally means somebody was uninsured. Okay? So I don't know if that's helpful to you, if you have any questions?
I think yesterday when we met, and that was several weeks ago, we wanted to know the demographics for this city. In terms of if you want to create something that's going to meet the needs of the residents, at least look at, see what the demographics look like around mental health diagnoses and substance abuse diagnoses. This is not necessarily the whole picture. This is with ER, hospital, and that kind of data. This doesn't have a clinic and ambulatory data in it.
Right. And they're indicators.
They're great.
For what the needs are within the community, because obviously, part of the emergency room and hospital utilization is generally what drives your first responder utilization and serves as a priority for what types of services are needed in the area.
I think the other thing we were trying to drill down into as well was how many are using their current programs as well, because I think some of that information wasn't available, and we couldn't have because of privacy rights. But we were trying to figure out how many are currently using Oasis and those types of things, programs as well.
So that's hard for us to get. I mean, obviously Oasis, or what was Oasis is different, and I can get that data. But the whole system, the state of Maryland doesn't really have a good reliable, and they're making great strides in this area, but right now, there's not a way for us to get good reliable data. And you know, as you'll notice, this is for years, 2013 and 2014, 2015, while the data's available, it's not considered reliable. There's a lot of duplicates and problems with data even as recently as that, so.
And there's a lot of work that they do, so that like, when they produce the data, so the data for 13 and 14, they've scrubbed it, they've cleaned it, and looked at it.
This probably goes back to the needs assessment and all the other stuff that's going on with the community and things as well.
Well, you know, it doesn't get you the numbers for the program. And we paused the Oasis program on treatment there for good reasons, but we did it for a little longer than any of us cared to do. It's back going, and I don't know what the numbers are. Do you have any idea what those numbers are?
They're very low, right?
They're very low. But five days a week, the phone's a man, there is a clinician there. And so the downside is that with that very good reason of having to ramp it down for a season, then, you know, building it back up. But I think that what you're thinking about and considering doing would be better served you and your residents if you can lump that over with some of the things we talked about with your parks and recs and some of those other kinds of things to bring it all together so that there are many options available for your residents that will meet the needs. And primarily, we're talking about your youth.
Follow-up, Fred?
I'd like to ask if I could, as the conversation progresses.
Okay, fine. Ms. Nicholas?
Let me just make a couple of observations. I love statistics. I spent 30 years working. These are misleading. Look at 20707, that is not, that includes West Laurel. And West Laurel is somewhere in the neighborhood of 5,000, 6,000 residents. They're not part of the city. Let me finish. You started out, you made a statement that we were looking for something to reflect what goes on in the city, okay? My concern is city residents right now, which is about 26,000 people. I'm not willing to take what goes on in Prince George's County unless Prince George's County is willing to pay their fair share. I'll be honest with you, okay? So 1891, I think is a misleading number, that's number one. The other issue is, when you get somebody that goes to the hospital, and I've been there, and I've been there in the emergency room, and they're trying to talk to a babbling something or another. Where do you live? I live in Laurel. Is there high on drugs? Okay? I assume, I'm going to make the assumption, they put down the city of Laurel, 20707. Okay, honestly, with Oasis, I used to be a member of the Rotary Club. I go back 30 years, and it was Laurel and Beltsville that set up Oasis. Okay, and I think that we need mental health, especially for youth. But I'm not going to allow a table like this to drive decisions that I have to make as a councilperson unless somebody can show me what will it cost the city to provide services for city residents? And what is Prince George's County willing to kick in? Because I think what's happening in the county is, they just want to get rid of it. And I, let me finish, I had occasion to read everything the mayor gave me. I like to read things.
Mike, let's be clear, we're not talking about using taxpayers' money here. That's not the way the program works.
Mr. President, let me just say this, it will end up costing the money, the city money, okay?
Not if we do, unless we approve it, Mike. The way this program is set up, it's not set up that way. We're not talking about using our taxpayers' money to fund this. Isn't that correct?
Oh, Mr. President, I just heard some dollars would come from the county for one or two years. Is that correct? Is that what I heard?
That is correct.
Okay, then who pays for it after that?
I don't have the answer for that, because, so.
Mr. President.
Great.
Mr. President.
Go ahead.
Let me finish. I spent a lot of time reading those documents, and I commented back to the mayor after I'd read them. I looked at what they're doing down in Greenbelt and other places. This is an expensive program, and we need to understand what the burden is will be placed on the cofferments of the citizens of Laurel. Not to say we shouldn't do it, but I just need to have some objective numbers and objective statistics. I mean, we've got, I mean, I don't know if this all goes to the emergency room over in Laurel. But I know that a fair number of people that have behavioral problems have to go to Howard County because the emergency room is in a red status. But I've been up there in the emergency room, watched them come in. But the question, are you measuring those? I mean, I don't know. These are wonderful numbers.
Go ahead.
But statistics will only tell you what you want me to tell you.
Let me, can I make one comment to you?
Yeah, just, yeah, mayor.
Just to be fair, what they gave us tonight, this is what we asked for. I don't want you, this is what we asked, and I know she used the word "city", but we asked for this information. So I just want to make, I don't want them to take that heat for that. That was us.
I'm not angry, I'm just, I understand. I just want you, I'm just saying, I like to see all the numbers.
Well, we didn't provide all of it, so if, are you done?
That's why I asked about the other numbers that I asked.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Yeah, that was us.
And we don't take any of this personally. I don't feel attacked. I want you to understand, I like, I ask difficult questions myself. I understand that. Let me, let me just tell you, we don't take it personally, and I'm a beast about numbers as well. So that was not the intent. First, I wanted to tell you, I will own 100% the data because we simply wanted to know what was the full picture of the demographics. This was not, this report was not designed to tell you, here's the data, fund this. That was not our job, and that was not the request or the ask. Thank you. It was basically to know, because we know it for the entire county, what is it specifically for Laurel City? And my epidemiologist, because the sociopolitans, did it for the surrounding areas. So it was not for that. The other thing was, we did not design a recommended program for you to approve. What we recommended to the preliminary meeting was, we didn't think you needed to invest the kind of money that a Greenbelt, a College Park, or some other Youth Services Bureau has done in the past and over 20 years. Our recommendation was, because of ACA and because of how people are mobile, there are multiple things that you can do and leverage right now that you have that is fabulous happening in Laurel City. You didn't necessarily need to recreate what other areas have done that over 20 years have become expensive because of staff and comp and all of those kinds of things. What you want to do is figure out what you need for your city and leverage those things. And what we wanted to do was to help you transition with that with some starter money. But what you can do, and one of the recommendations that we set was, find a provider who's willing to set up shop and let them bill and do self-pay, and that wouldn't cost you anything. What we know works, though, is some of the group support, a place for education, activities for youth, parks and recs, pull some of that together, collaborate and make a full program for the city with options leveraging things that you're already paying for. And you'd have something pretty awesome that's designed for your residents. So beg my pardon for the data, and if I knew you were a data geek, I would have done better.
You can ask for it, that's true.
Yeah, but next, no.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Okay, one of the things that I've noticed, and actually, Dellic and I've had this conversation, I've noticed an increased number of our senior citizens in mental, excuse me, behavioral health. Just those who are on Oasis, who've worked the thing down, who've used it for the last 20 years. So I don't see that reflected here, but again.
So with our seniors, usually it's not behavioral health, it is dementia or Alzheimer's, and those are neurological, medical issues. And we really need to, you need to look at that, but for the most part, and doesn't mean that our seniors can't have a behavioral health issue, but for the most part, some of those changes, and a lot of people who are not healthcare people mix them up and want to lump it in with behavioral health, mental health issue or addiction issues, a lot of it, and we see the numbers going up in our community and across the nation, a lot of it is early Alzheimer's, dementia, things that we, everyone says, you know, we're finding it more, and we're seeing it more, and it is on the rise, which is a different issue.
Any of those people live on their own?
Correct.
Who live today? Need to think they're going to do something, do themselves harm or somebody else's. End it up when you've got a youth running around. Use something that he shouldn't have used. But it's worse when we get, I think, older. People have learned to trust over the years, living alone. And all of a sudden, they're doing something they shouldn't do because they're a little bit out of control. Okay, so I just, I'll point that right there. I had that conversation with the delegate. And what I've noticed, when I've been both in Rotary and in Laurel County, in Howard County, they seem to get an increasing number of those people being, going to do themselves harm. Okay, if they're doing themselves harm, they're probably capable, possibly capable, of doing somebody else's harm. They can treat the overdoses, or they can treat the imbalance. I'm just really concerned about that group, that is a growing group, in addition to youth.
It is a growing group, but it's not necessarily behavioral health or addiction. It is, but, our Department of Family Services, they are our aging, our aging office for the county. There are lots of resources, and there is a lot of help for residents, families, siblings, or children of aging parents who are living alone, who are, and those symptoms are hard to finally diagnose because it's very subtle when it starts. But there might be some things that you want to do aside from this project is to meet with them to see what kind of partnerships you can do, because it is on the rise. And I have it impacting me personally. So I've got a mother that I am the POA for, who no one told me that she was acting a little special. And she had early dementia, so we found out she wasn't safe to stay at home. I took it over. There, and I have her in an assisted living where she is thriving. But she had been living on her own for three years, and nobody kind of did anything about it. They thought she was a little quirky. So that's happening over and over and over again in all of the cities and counties. It's an old country word.
Mr. President, thank you, mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Curry?
Did you want to add, or? Okay. Yeah, these scare us. Most people don't know that only part of Laurel is in Prince George's County.
So my, my.
So I'm going to turn that over.
Thank you. Well, I'm glad, but my epidemiologist knew that. She was just trying to provide a little bit of a picture, so, thank you. We deal in these numbers all the time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The other thing, you know, I would say individually, I would be a little suspicious when someone from the county comes in offering help, because the county doesn't come up here and offer help that often, so.
Well, I was asked to come.
Yes, and I think it's, I think it's wonderful, and the mayor knows what I'm referring to.
Okay.
But I think that when you broke it down to the provider and the setup, which is what I, you know, read and heard about before, was setting up shop and making it self-pay, because I know of Oasis and the Rotary for years now, and that's a wonderful program. But what I do worry about, which you kind of touched upon, is the growth. Because programs like this sometimes take on a life of their own, and they do grow over 20 years. And I don't want them to become a huge item on our budget. But if there are people that we can help and we can dovetail with our programs, that's something good.
I think that would be really great. I really do. We had a great conversation, a pre-conversation. You've got a lot of good things going that you can leverage.
And I thank you for coming, and it has nothing to do with you personally.
Well, we don't, I'm five years in this job. I take nothing personally. Thank you very much. You're doing your jobs, and I appreciate that.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yeah, thank you. You had mentioned that the volumes are low.
Is your mic on, please?
Yes. You had mentioned that the volumes are low. Was that specifically for Laurel?
Historically, they have been low, period. So I'm the Health Officer of five years, and I look for numbers. And so for the program, and it's been, it's served this community well, and it's popular. But in terms of overall numbers, they have been low for the whole five years I'm here. They've been severely almost life support. Once we had the issue that required us to stop everything, reassess, get back in compliance with what we should be doing, and starting it back up, the numbers are really, really low, but they're going back up. But the goal is to be transitioned until we can transition it into something else. The Health Department cannot be a Youth Services Bureau. We're out of that business. We never should have been in that business. We are a provider of health services, and we want to leverage and help do technical assistance on a lot of things. But sometimes it's a good thing to be the only thing in the state, and most times, it's not good. And it is, the health, there is no other Health Department that has functioned as a Youth Services Bureau. We're not set up to do it. It's not in the vein. And so we're not saying that you shouldn't do a Youth Services Bureau. What we're saying is, we're out of that business. We're transitioning the treatment and care programs, and we want to help you do that with a provider that can sell, I mean, bill and collect funds. But we want to help you do that, but we, the Health Department is out of the Youth Services Bureau business.
I just find it surprising that the numbers are low. I actually work at the hospital. And as I round every day on behavioral health and in the emergency department, it's always full. I mean, it's always full, so.
But not everybody will come to an outpatient treatment, ambulatory program. It doesn't mean that they don't need it. What's surprising is that for all of Prince George's County, if we just take the small segment of population of the Medicaid population, and we have good benefits for behavioral health services with Medicaid recipients, only 7% of those are using those benefits for outpatient treatment. That's not good. And so we need to do a better job of educating and communicating, letting people know where services are. We're already doing that, but 7% equals zero to me. So if you say you've got, 25% of our population are eligible for medical assistance, and in Maryland, that's a great thing. It was expanded with ACA and what we did in Maryland. Only 7% of the people in the community who have coverage are using it. That's not a lot of penetration, so we all can do better as healthcare stakeholders. You're welcome.
Mr. Smalls?
I just want to, just kind of round this out with a couple of statements you made, just for my better understanding. So if we're talking about the 7% number or something more or less of that, that the county has been participating in this program for a number of years, it's apparent, and you stated, and I totally understand it, that you have a population of folks who have behavioral health needs, but because there's services there, it doesn't necessarily mean that they're using it. And that's obviously what's been happening.
That is correct.
Over the years. So if the county hasn't been able to figure it out, how to get that larger population to take part in the services, and this isn't a question I'm expecting you to answer, I'm just putting it out there. How would the city, in a much smaller operating area or program, be able to take whatever that segment is in this area and have an impact?
So the 7% was for those large bucket, and to be perfectly... And to be perfectly honest, the county is just aware that the percentage is so low. And this year, we got our, we funded, the Health Department funded a community needs assessment for behavioral health services. And the gap of what do we have, because we didn't know what we had, what we don't have. The Health Department is a smidge of services for Prince George's County and the state. We're a safety net for people with medical assistance and uninsured. The large bulk of providers out there are privates who are doing this, who won't accept a Medicaid or any other insurance. Or they'll take a check, and we've got tons of them in the county. And what we didn't know was, because we weren't connected with them, they're not necessarily, necessarily reporting out to us or anything. So we did a community needs assessment for all behavioral health services that was completed in February. Which is one of the preliminary things we found out was that of all services in the county. And, and that's not for people who have good insurances, you know, Kaiser and Cigna and all those other things. This is of that Medicaid population, then. They get richer benefits than I would get with a Kaiser or a Care First. Um they are underutilized, but it's for the entire county, and we just became aware of it in February. So we are working to absolutely counter that, but it is low, and I think for multiple reasons in our county. As we speculate, because overall in the county, all of the evidence-based types of programs you should offer, we offer here. It's just in terms of where they're located and the degree that we offer them. So this is a big number, but, and it's a bigger problem because the privates aren't necessarily connected to us. That's changing in this state, and with this, the state has come together and joined their addictions authority. And their, their behavioral health authority. So we're in the midst of that, um, that joining merger as we've merged in the county. But we just became aware of this in February, March, and it was stunning and shocking to us.
I understand. One, one just follow-up from Councilman Les, and this is just, again, for my better understanding. So from funding perspective, uh, funding for a program or youth services bureau. Could look like county funds, to an extent, state funds?
So, uh, who's missing today is, and we didn't have her sign up to come, is Elena Balon Butler. Is the director of the Department of Family Services, a separate agency than mine. And that is where, uh, Governor's, uh, Dollars for Children and the historical funding for youth services bureau. Some of that had come through that office and agency. I think she did say at the last meeting that there was some funding, not a lot. That the Youth Services Bureau could apply for and get support. Um, I don't have control of those funds. But she was at our last meeting and she said that there was some funding. I don't know how much.
So I'm just thinking about funding opportunities. Maybe, maybe that's a better way for me to.
There are funding opportunities, and I think with what you have here in the city, that if you're, depending on how you're planning to leverage a program. Because we didn't create a program either. We didn't, we gave some ideas at that meeting, but we never did, we, we didn't create the program. We think that that's gonna best come from within you all. Uh, we can help with that, but you've got a lot you can leverage. Um to create the kinds of things that parents would need, with children who have issues with addictions or behavioral health needs. And it's close to home, and, um, so there are many things you can do, multiple funding opportunities. I never let not having money stop us from developing a need, uh, a need-based, evidence-based program. The money always comes for really good programs that you will say and can prove, I'll get you some outcome. But you, we love, we, we are seventy percent grant-funded, and most people don't know that about the Prince George's County Health Department. Seventy percent of my seventy-two million dollar budget comes from grants that are very specific. And define what you can use those for. So we, we, we don't miss many opportunities either.
And I think it's fairly safe, you know, Mr. Smalls, that we have some in-kind services that are, that fit into this program.
Oh, absolutely.
We already are doing in the city, so it's not something we re- have to reinvent.
I understand, and that's what I, that's what I noted in my notes, that, that as I was listing potential funding. I, I just got to state and county, but um y- you mentioned, um, providers, private providers.
The private providers can bear.
And services that we currently provide in the city, that's, that would sort of be a wash for us from a, a, a budgetary standpoint. So, yeah.
And most of the kids in our state are covered, so kids are covered on their parents' insurance. The state did an amazing job expanding medical assistance long before ACA for children, our chip, uh, children's health program. But most of the kids in our state are covered, so they're, and if they're, if they don't have the high-end insurance, their medical assistance will cover. The behavioral health needs and those addiction needs if you need them. They're not tapping into that, and probably parents don't know that. It could be a resource for them.
Totally understand. Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Come here.
What types of technical services and would one of them be assisting even if we found a provider? Someone to help us, uh, or help the provider write grants? Because each area is so specific when it becomes, when you get into the grant area.
That is something we could consider. Um, technical assistance for us means that we wanna help you, you know, you're not experts in vetting whether a behavioral health provider is going to be. Good, bad, or in between. We want, we could help with that. Um, whether you wanted us to, if you were gonna do an RFP or something to get a relationship with somebody. We could help with that. We have a magnificent grant writer in Lorraine Thomas. We use her for most of them. We've won several federal grants with her. She's amazing. She's on contract with us. It's something we could do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mike, you got anymore? Okay, Mayor Mo.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just a couple cleanup. The, um. First, uh, thank you very much and thank you to you and your staff. Um, I just want it, for those that may be listening at home. The city of Greenbelt, city of Bowie, city of College Park, city of District Heights are the current four, along with the Oasis here in Laurel. That's, um, that are still up and running. The core, there still is a core service that must be met. Is that correct still for when you're running a youth services bureau?
I think there are some guidelines. I'm not familiar with them though.
I'm looking at Title sixteen under the Department of Juvenile Services for Community Non-Residential Services, so. Um, and I, the reason I say it, we've been talking about behavioral health an awful lot, and I just wanna make sure people understand that. We're also talking about tutoring. We're talking about, um, employment assistance. There's a whole lot of things here under the services. It also talks about the state shall provide seventy-five percent of funding for eligible youth services bureaus as provided in the state budget. Now, that's the real question, as provided in the state budget. So that's the tricky, tricky part there. Um, as well as, um, some county funding, and then, um, the other thing, I know Lori Woods is here as well. Um, I've, um, talked about trying to reach out to meet with the Board of Directors of the current Oasis as well. To, um, talk to them as well as we continue to move forward. Again, and I think it's fair to say that, um, Ms. Creekmere is very aware that, um, my position for, for many, many years. And many on this council's always been very cautious of how we, um, move into or really stay away from social services. Especially as a local, local government, because, um, there, we have one thing, property tax. That's it. And it's, um, very, um, hard for local government to reach out. But I've looked at, and we, everybody here has, of Greenbelt, Bowie, College Park, District Heights. I've talked to almost all of them except District Heights. And I thought their budgets were about fifty thousand dollars until I talked to them and looked at them, and they're like one point two, one point five, one point four million. Um, each of them have told me, um, relax. We've been around for forty years. We've been around for thirty years. You need to take small steps when you do this and to move into it, and I think, um, working together, um, we can do. We can do this. I'm willing to take a stab at it and, um, work together. I don't wanna lose the services in this, this area, and I'm willing to work with the community, willing to work with the county and the, the council. I know that Joanne, um, Joanne Bar, Department of Park Recreation, she's been in our discussions. We think there's several things already being done that qualify under this, under this program that we're already doing, that we're funding. So, um, we just need to take a good look, sit down and decide, um, you know, if council's willing to, to move forward with this. And to work with some of the providers, um, talk to two other individuals that are willing to, um, you know, take a look. And, and help the council as well, mayor and council as well. The interesting thing was, um, I just got an email last week from a school here in. In Laurel that's looking for counseling program services. And it's very frustrating as an educational educator and a social worker that they can't find anybody to help. They had reached out to Oasis and there's, um, you know, they just are very frustrated they can't. So there is a need, and I just don't wanna, want us to, um, lose the opportunity. If we're not willing to do it, or we, we are concerned that it's just something out of our reach, I, I understand. We'll be upfront and we'll, we'll tell the county and, um, that we're unable to do it. And we'll work with them to figure out another way to keep the services in the area, but, um, if that's the will of, of the council. But I'd like for us to take a good look at it. I've worked with the president and the President Pro Tim on a couple of different meetings on this, so. I think there's some options. I just ask for everybody to keep an open mind. Again, thank you for, for working. We really need to sit down and make a decision by before, um, the Christmas holiday. I made that commitment to the exec's office. And I wanna try to keep that either way, so with that said, again, thank you all very much for coming. I appreciate it.
Is there anything else from council? Seeing none. Thank you all very, very much for coming. I appreciate it. And have a good evening. We'll adjourn now, um, and be back in like ten minutes to start our council meeting. Thank you.